You guys want to stand up, please? I pledge the reasons for black. I pledge the reasons.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ah, this is a historic night for the city of Benton. Now, this is the first night that we're going to record the meetings and put them out on YouTube and on Facebook. So, I'm going to read you something we put on Facebook a couple hours ago. If you are unavailable to attend the Benton City Council meetings this evening, the city will be taking an audio and video recording of the meeting. Tomorrow morning at approximately 10:00 a.m., a YouTube link as the meeting will be posted on the city website and Facebook page. Members in the audience at this nice meeting should also be aware that their audio will be recorded. The meeting is scheduled at 6:00 p.m. tonight. When you address, this is one thing we need to do, and we're doing it for a good reason, is that when you address the council and the public access, be sure to state your entire name. Tom Carter. And not just not Tom, even though we know you as Tom, you need to state your whole name and your purpose. So, I'm going to call.
Mr. Garavaya, President. Mr. Story.
President.
Mr. Perkins.
President.
Mr. Mesus.
President.
Mayor Fonger.
Here. I'll read in a minute. He can't be. He's gone.
Mayor, you'll see in the package, you've got minutes from the Tuesday, June 9th, or excuse me, June 10th meeting. I guess that's Monday, is that correct?
It is.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, Monday, June 10th meeting, in your package, we give a motion to waive the reading of those that's presented for the June 10th, 2019, 6:00 p.m. city council meeting.
I make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Garavaya?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Mesus?
Yes.
Mayor Fonger.
Yes.
Okay. Tonight, we have a guest that's going to address us briefly. He lives out of town, so we're going to get him up here and get him on his way. It's Reg Ankrum. And Reg, if you want to address this and tell us what you're here for.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Reg Ankrum. I'm the president of Simac Energy, and you are my bosses. We consult with the city of Benton and your electric aggregation program. And I just wanted to, the mayor was kind enough to put me on the agenda to let you know what has happened and what we recommend, and I had the good fortune to talk to a lady here tonight who raised one other question that I should address. So, in any case, just to let you know, you may recall about six years ago, Benton went with electric aggregation to provide an option to citizens, and, which was at a lower price than Ameren's. For roughly four and a half years, your Benton price has been lower than Ameren's. A couple of years ago, Ameren's price fell below Benton, as well as many other communities in Illinois for the first time. And we were able to negotiate a deal with Home Deal to provide $3.50 a month billing credit, which basically evened the two rates out. And what happened this last year, actually, it happened in April and May, and June was the effective date of it. Ameren's rate dropped even lower to 4.7 cents, and you may recall Benton's rate is 6.285 cents, or a difference of roughly 1.7 cents. Annually, that amounts, for the average customer using an Ameren, that's, this is Ameren's average customer, who uses 10,000 kilowatt-hours annually, that's a savings of almost $120 a year. And so, we had written to the mayor, and the mayor was kind enough to put on the website, and I think maybe issue a news release or two, a news release that pointed out, people were really better now to switch back to Ameren because of that lower rate. And to the city's credit, the city insisted or assured that people had the right to opt out if Ameren's rate did fall below the city's rate. So, that has happened, and just as the city, five or six years ago, provided an option to, for a lower price, the provision in the contract that allows people to opt out gives them the option to go back to Ameren for a lower price. So, that's what I wanted to point out tonight, and people have that right. The question I got from our friend here this evening was, what if I drop out and Ameren's price goes lower? Well, the point of Ameren's price is it's fixed for 12 months. So, if people opt out this month in June, they have to stay with Ameren for 12 months. That's the rule. But Ameren's price is not going to change for 12 months. So, the good news is, they can take advantage of that lower rate, and if we're able to get a lower rate when our contract ends, which is actually December 2020, I believe, I believe that's right, then we will have, and we're not going to get a rate that's higher. We wouldn't recommend to Benton something that's not going to work for, say, citizens' money. But if we can get a lower rate, people then can go back to the city's program. So, you provided an option to serve people, and that option is serving people. Take a look at, a quick look at some numbers, given the number of annual kilowatt-hours used, numbers of households in Benton that have participated. And netting out what we saw as a reduction in the last 18 months, presuming, and I say that because the $3.50 credit which we tried to negotiate this year, Vistra has not done. Vistra's the owner of the generation. The savings net is about $600,000 for the citizens of Benton under your program. So, it's worked, but we have, there's a better way to work for citizens now. And, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm happy to take any questions you might have. Anyone ask questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks so much. I've been enjoying seeing her children.
Thanks again.
Thank you, actually.
Hey, subject of the topic, report to Commissioner Perkins.
Already, so now we have a purchase order for $1,373.98 for a chop saw. About a new one during the last water break that we had right off the square. That was something that was much needed. With that chop saw, I was going to say Commissioner Mesus Smith and Commissioner Story will also back me up on seeing the need for that, and that was truly, that was a humbling experience having our city come together for that. I really think that was great, so. But we bought a new chop saw. We did trade in our old one for $300, and we did buy a 16-inch blade. Some people say, do you need a blade that big? Well, yes, because the old one, the reason why we had it, the old one was defunct in two. The newer blade will be able to cut directly into that pipe without any multiple cuts and make it a cleaner, smoother transition, leading in to safety for that. So, I would like to make a motion to approve the purchase order for the new chop saw for, once again, $1,373.98 on that.
Commissioner Garavaya? Yes. Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Mesus?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all. Secondly, I'd like to, discussion approval of hiring of additional water department maintenance men. We started with 40 applicants. We narrowed that down to those that had experience that were relevant to the job. Through the time being, we narrowed it down to one, Mr. Dallas Avery Lane Richardson. And he's in the room, if you'd like to send us those. I'd like to make a motion to approve him for our new maintenance position, so.
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Mesus?
Yes.
Mayor Fonger.
What's the effective date of this?
It's pending background check to be completed, which we're at the final stage for that right now, so.
Okay, you don't want treasure or nothing?
Absolutely.
Time pregnant, so thank you.
So.
Thank you, David.
Do you have any pictures or anything official? But he, I'll just touch back on him. He just, he really stood apart, Mr. Mayor. I've done several interviews in my life, running several different businesses, and he's humbled, he's excited to start, and we have, I mean, we have a lot of great people that apply, a lot of great experience. And to be honest, it was a very hard decision, but if you just knew the way that he performed himself, and the thing is, is I just, I think the biggest thing is, when you hire somebody for the city, whether you be a commissioner, mayor, or a city employee, that's a representation on how your city is.
Exactly.
And I think he's going to be a very fine example and a shining surface in our city. So, if I didn't have done it, or thought that, I would not approve that, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good job.
Thanks. Moving along, we have the discussion and approval of the ordinance for the backflow preventers. At this time, I'd like to have my water and sewer superintendent, Craig Miles, speak on that and kind of explain a little bit of what that is.
Basically, on this ordinance, there's a lot of homes in Benton that have basements which have drains in the floors which are tied to sand very sewer, which they should not be, which they're pumping stormwater. And when your basement floods, you pump the stormwater back out. And then we have a big rains, it's backing up into these basements. Basically, this ordinance has those people install a backflow preventer. Right now, we have claims from people, we know the sewer is backing up in their basements. They have these drains in their floor, which they shouldn't be there. This pretty much covers the city liability-wise if they put the backflow preventer in. They put it in, it still floods, and risk reliable. They put it in, it should stop it, we should never have to have a claim against the city as far as that goes. I think Tom would understand that being a sewer.
They're not even supposed to have basement drains.
Yeah, so, this kind of covers the city and covers the citizens. It stops it before we ever flood their basements, is basically the reasonable ordinance we put in place.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Well, at the time, I'd like to make a motion to that. Tom, with the ordinance.
1911.
1911. So, I'd like to make a motion for 1911 to be passed for the backflow preventers, as previously mentioned in a previous meeting as well, and more clarification on tonight, so.
And just for the news media, if they put this out, the current holders that have these drains will have 180 days to comply with getting a backflow preventer, and that they'll need to be expected by our water and sewer superintendent, and all new construction will be required to have those as they're built. So, we want folks to know that, so we have 180 days to comply with this.
And also, you might want to note that failure to comply doesn't equate to a fine or anything, it just means that they shall be, the city will be void of any liability in the answer for the backflow.
Teamwork makes framework.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Garavaya?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Mesus?
Yes.
Yes. And last but not least, approval appointment of water and superintendent with a four-year contract. We're going to table that until we can, until the next meeting, or until we can get some further clarification. I'd like to make a motion to table.
Commissioner Garavaya?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Mesus?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Speech and credence, Commissioner Mesus.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, nothing good for a decision, more just for discussion. One of the things that we are working on is in partnership with the Benton Civic Center. There's a back road center street that comes in to the back part of their lot, and they've had a problem with flooding coming in and out, so we're working on developing a relationship where they get, what they need to do is their part, we replace the drain column, their part, so we're going to create an agreement that what we'll do and what they'll do. So, we're trying to work with them and develop a better relationship. When it comes to shared use, apparently, it's a street that most people come off of from the back, and it will make them more successful, because they'll be able to level out the parking, get that water out, and get back to the backfield. So, that's exciting, one thing we're working on. One other thing we've been working on and looking at is, how do we create more parking around the square, knowing that we're going to lose some in very near future? If you will see Point C there, talking about the loading zones in Scarborough and Tolliver. Right now, it currently says no parking. We went back to check the ordinance, but actually, it's an ordinance that says that's to be 20-minute loading and unloading. So, not even, the ordinance already exists, I was going to say about having one created, it already exists, so we'll be changing the signs over. But that should gain us six to seven parking spots on that side for 20-minute loading and unloading, or somebody needs to run into the bus, or run into the bank, or run into somewhere close, they'll be able to come in and out. The nice part about that as well is, that's also a street that we sweep, so that'll make sure that we don't have cars in the areas, so we can street sweep and keep those places nice.
Very good.
Last piece, this just happened today, and we've been working with Sativa, and they're working on their fiber optics, and they are in need of putting in a couple of above-ground boxes, and everything else they didn't, we'll do below ground, this needs to happen above ground. They asked for it to be near the fire station at a federal building, and it's at the west corner of the lot, so you'll see them quickly start working on building a box up there. They do everything, and they do all the tear out, clean it all up, they'll actually kill it, feed it, pay it, and we should not have to do anything. But that'll get them closer to the fire station, so the fire station then will have fiber optic, but also the square gets fiber optic, and they're working their way down towards us. So, it puts them even closer to the city hall having fiber optic. So, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, we had, just to interject something, we had a perfect storm and water break a week or so ago, and it happened on the, coming off of the square on the South Main. And I want to commend Commissioner Perkins and Commissioner Mesus, thank you guys did a great job. Police were there, the fire were there, you know, it's all hands on deck if something like that happens, and put our communications to the public, and for something that was a major, major situation, you guys did a remarkable job. It was 12 hours of hard labor, if I understand.
We were there until 4:30 in the morning, and I also want to note that they went back to work at 5:30 a.m. the very next day.
Exactly.
So, they went on to the shower, ate breakfast, came right back to it, so.
We're very lucky, actually, from exceptional employees and commissioners, and I want to commend them, it's very commendable. Is that all you have? Speech and Public Health and Safety Commission, Story.
We've got one purchase order for two tires for 801, the front steer tires, they just have 20% tread, comes to $1,532. I need four good years for the chief's car, come to 2,000, uh, 22657017 for $96716. It replayed, let's see, that's mounted, balanced, out the door, and that is a state bid price that we got, come to $2,55748. That's what the state did.
It's a state bid, meaning just most competitive price possible? Is that why we don't?
It comes from the state. The state puts a bid out, they sell them, they set the price where you can buy.
Okay, and we don't have anyone in Franklin County that does that?
Not as I know of. Not for, not for those tires.
Not for those, yeah, not for those tires.
You can get, you can go to, I think we get some vehicle tires from Superlu.
But not those, yeah, but not the big tires.
Truck tires.
Truck tires, yeah, that's what I figured.
So, I make a motion to accept that, Marion Davin.
One second, please.
Commissioner Garavaya?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Mesus?
Yes.
Mayor Fonger.
Yes.
Uh, sad to say that our chief is stepping down from the chief's job. He's going to be an investigator, and the investigator is now going to be our chief for 30 days or so. But I got a letter here, if, do you want me to read the whole thing, Chief?
You don't have to read it all.
But as of 8:00 in the morning, he will be on investigations, detective work. And he's been, worked hard for the city, he's done a great job, got a new police station, K-9 unit, done it through fundraisers, worked with resource officers, get them done, and it's been a privilege to work with you, Chief.
Thank you.
And I don't like it, but you do what you got to do. So, thank you very much.
It's been an honor and privilege, sir, and the council and the community, I really appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see.
You make a motion to accept his resignation.
I don't want to make the motion. I make a motion, we accept it as a nation.
Commissioner Garavaya?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Really?
Yes.
Commissioner Mesus?
Yes.
Mayor Fonger.
Yes.
If we could all look it up, could he say?
C, we're going to name Mike Andrews as interim police chief. And Mike, would you like to stand up?
I'd like to, sir.
He was, he was our former chief when he stepped down, and I think, I think they're working this, working this both ways. He steps down, takes his job, now he stepped down, now he takes his job. So, welcome aboard, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you. You just be in plain clothes, it'll be fun. I make a motion to accept Mike as official chief.
Second.
Commissioner Garavaya?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Mesus?
Yes.
The next one I got is D, discussion and approval of razor wire, Constantine wire fencing ordinance.
You had brought up, Commissioner Story, past meeting or a couple meetings, actually, about wanting to establish an ordinance, so our recommendation was to put that on the agenda, you get that on the agenda, so I suggested you make a motion just for myself to meet with your code enforcement officer to establish an ordinance prohibiting certain types of wire fencing.
I make a motion, let Tom talk, to David Garavaya, our code enforcement officer, to do an attorney call, if you get away from it.
Second.
Commissioner Garavaya?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Mesus?
Yes.
Mayor Fonger.
Okay, E, discussion and approval of one-year contract for the fire chief. I make a motion, we accept his contract for one year.
I don't know how to do this, exactly, but we've not had an opportunity to look over all of the contracts and discuss any of them. I was, as a finance commissioner, I wasn't in any of the meetings for the contracts, and it does involve finances, and I think that it would only be appropriate that we have the time to discuss the contracts before we vote on them.
We've got a motion to accept that contract, we've got a comment made, so I don't, if there's a second to approve that contract, that's fine, or if she's, if there's not a second, she can make a motion to table that. That's what we have right now, ladies and gentlemen.
Is it just table, I mean?
The, actually, the first motion that has been made is to approve a one-year. At the last meeting, or two meetings ago, there was a, a motion to approve entering into an agreement with Shane Cochran to be a fire chief for one year, and since then, we have prepared a contract which now is up tonight for approval. And my understanding is Commissioner Story is asking for that contract to be approved, and prior to that motion being seconded and being voted on, Commissioner Garavaya's indicated that she would like to have an opportunity to have more time to review that contract, my understanding. Can I, Garavaya?
Yes, or even to go into an executive session and discuss the contract with the other commissioners. Not only, I'll say not only this contract, but all of the contracts I want to talk to be.
This is the contract that has been right now.
But this is the contract that has been right now.
I mean, I agree, I mean, we haven't really got to see it, so.
I would echo that as well, is that the finance commissioner needs at least the opportunity to review and look at some of that.
And that has no bearing on your.
That's all right.
So, we're kind of, just, motion would die for lack of a second. Commissioner Story's motion, you want to make a motion to table or approve?
I would like to make a motion, I would go into an executive session tonight to discuss all of the contracts, so that we all have knowledge of what we're voting on. It's very important that we be aware of what, what I'll send them and have the opportunity to comment on it.
Would you like, when we come out of executive session, to vote on the ones that could be on the agenda tonight?
Yes.
Okay. So, we won't table that, what we'll simply do then is go into executive session to discuss the contracts that's on the agenda.
I'm not going to table mine.
That's fine, but I'm just saying, so that we have clarification, there's no indication for the public or anything.
We voted on his.
So, what?
Craig's.
But we won't go into, when it comes to executive session, how you can make that motion, Commissioner Garavaya.
Yes. So, what are we doing here? We're not?
We voted, we voted to give him a contract, we have not voted on his contract. We presented him with a contract that, that he did not accept, and he, so another contract is done for work, we just want an opportunity to look at it as a collective.
So, when we get, when we get to 14, you can ask for that motion.
So, why, why are we dragging, dragging this thing on? This thing has been going on long enough, the guy's been tortured enough, give him the dad gum contract, get it over with. I mean, give him the same as the police contract. Good Lord. Just drag it on.
He doesn't agree with him, with the police contract.
You want to add?
It should be, they should be the same.
Okay.
They should be the same.
If you look at G.
If you look at Point G.
It died for motion of a second, for lack of a second. There's been indication that it may be addressed on number 14, so I suggest that Commissioner Story go to F. We still have a form here, it's like on six F, discussion and or approval of resignation of a paid on-call firefighter. In your package, it looks like there is an indication dated 6/11/19, that paid on-call firefighter Matt Moore has indicated that he is no longer a member of the Benton Fire Department, has been hired by the Village of West City, so he submitted a letter of resignation, so we need a motion, a second, to accept that resignation of on-call firefighter Matt Moore.
Make a motion. Second.
Commissioner Garavaya?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Mesus?
Yes.
It's like the other matter under six, is 6G, discussion and or approval of donation equipment from the city of West Frankfort Fire Department. You'll see a letter in your file dated 6/11/19 that says that there is attached a donation with a liability release concerning city of West Frankfort donating five NSA Firehawk breathing apparatus with mask and bottle to the Benton Fire Department. It says that these are approximately five years old and have a service life of over 15 years. The new units can run approximately $7,500 each, and they believe that these have a used value of $4,000. They've been tested, apparently have all been placed into service, so we need a motion to accept these, but part of the acceptance would be a release of liability by the city to the city of West Frankfort, which only exists. I'll make that motion, Tom.
My second. Commissioner Garavaya?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Mesus?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's really, a caption, finance report to Commissioner Garavaya.
Yes. Okay, first, to go over the, the amount that's in the general fund is $69,000. thirty-two dollars and forty-five cents. Water and sewer is, uh, twenty-eight thousand nine hundred seventy-three dollars and eighty-two cents. And then the total payroll for this period is ninety-eight thousand six dollars and twenty-seven cents. I make a motion that that be approved.
A second.
Commissioner Garavaya?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Meszczak?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
And I have several, um, applications for sewer adjustments, and most of them are, um, not all are for swimming pools at that time of the year. And, um, so the first one is for Diane Dillard, and this is a swimming pool adjustment. I'm trying to name all of them off. The next one is Kelly Mandrell, and this is a swimming pool adjustment. And I'd like to note that all of these have been, um, checked out by the zoning administrator, and they have taken care of them. Uh, the next one is David and Melody Fletcher. And the next one is Jeff Whitlow. And the next one is Ron Osborne, swimming pool. And we have one with Elizabeth Kane, so swimming pool. And, uh, Casey, um...
That's the cook?
Yeah. Cook, okay. Thank you for that. And that one is gonna approve. I'm sorry, Commissioner. Um, Patty Price. Kelly Knight. And Daniel L. Boncic. And make a motion that all of these that have been named be approved for, um, for the sewer adjustments, for their, the water that we're managing.
Second.
Commissioner Garavaya?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Meszczak?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
And I do have four who, who applied for, um, for the sewer adjustments that were, are not accepted because they did not comply with not having senses. All four of them did not have senses, so they did not... So, I need to make, read their names off as well. Okay, so the ones that were not accepted were, um, Tristan, um...
McGonig.
McGonig. Okay, thank you. Partly it wasn't, didn't come through clear on the right. Amy Allen, Georgia Lowhand, and Jane Dean. And then reason for denial for all of those. Yeah.
We'll give a second on a motion to deny those four.
Okay. Your second?
Yes.
Second.
Commissioner Garavaya?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Meszczak?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
And am I making the ordinance or discussions that you want to say about that?
Yeah, on seven, the, uh, ladies and gentlemen, the discussion and or approval of prevailing wage ordinance, the General Assembly has, um, amended the law that you no longer have to publish prevailing wage as a municipality, so we do not need to do seven B.
Um, we're moving forward with the interview process for a water clerk, deputy, and also a deputy city clerk position in the, in City Hall here. And we see, received numerous applications, and we've gone through the applications, there's going to be notifying people for, for the, um, for interviews for that position. It will be a full-time position for a water clerk slash deputy city clerk position. Okay. Um, also, I'd like to, um, have approval, and I'm making, I'm making a motion for approval of a resolution for the attendance at the annual I M L conference.
That's resolution of nineteen oh eight.
Second.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Meszczak?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
And also, I would like to make a motion for the, uh, approval of a resolution for the attendance at the annual TIF conference in nineteen oh nine.
Commissioner Garavaya?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Meszczak?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
Okay, and then F is, um, the approval of a four-year contract for the community relations director. And there again, I would like to table that until we go into executive, or I'd like to go into executive session and go over all the contracts before we vote on them. I think it's very, I think we owe that to our citizens, that we are, uh, discussed and informed, um, all of those essential matters.
And, and just so that we show on that app, Commissioner Garavaya, this will involve the, uh, past meeting where we agreed to a four-year, uh, contract with a racial guardman for that position, so that's the contract that you'll be looking at.
Yes.
So, the attorney has no updates?
Right.
He uncovered the affairs on updates, so I think I need to throw a little humor in here, Mike. Um...
I was hoping for a minute, Mr. Mayor.
When, when I became mayor, this is funny, yeah. I was in my office about the third day, Mike Andrews came in, you know, and I've known Mike since high school. And Mike came in and said, "Mayor, I think you wanna resign." And I said, "Gosh, I wish you wouldn't, you know, I don't know what I would do," you know? And he said, "Well, it's just better than I do," and, and I understood, and, you know, these guys, the chief can get your on-call twenty-four seven." I mean, and I meant on-call, it's not a-call, it's on-call. So, I was in a titty, like, what am I gonna do? And all of a sudden, Kyle Melvin showed up in my office and said, "Mayor, I, I'm kinda interested in that job, that Mike just resigned from." And I said, "Well, Kyle, you know, saved my life," and then Kyle comes in to me and gives me his resignation, and then Mike is gonna be, you know? See, so, I mean, these guys are playing with me, you know, and I, I love it, but, um, I tell you what, I couldn't, I couldn't choose, I couldn't even make up any two better guys than you, you two guys. And I wanna thank you, and, um, the service that you gave in the past, Mike, was exceptional. The service you gave Kyle in the past is exceptional, and you're gonna do the same thing in the future, so, um, Benton is so fortunate to have, um, the responders we have and the chiefs, and I, I just wanna thank you. You know, you, you guys do things that not everybody knows about, and a lot of things pass by my desk every day, and I, I know what you do, and, um, I mean, the public is indebted to you, you know, and I thank you very much. And I get a little emotional because I've known, I've known these guys for, since they were little guys, and that's what gray hair does for you, it gets your point. But I wanna thank you very much, both of you, and it's, it's been a pleasure being, working with you, and, um, and I know we'll do well, and you guys wanna switch me in, I'm open, you know, and whatever you wanna do, just let me know.
Thank you, man.
But thank you. And discussion and approval of resignation of Vicky Cochran on the City Center Authority Board, and Vicky did submit, uh, a letter of resignation. She served well. Uh, the Benton City Center Board is, is a hard-working board, they've been very successful. Uh, they, they built that place up to where it's, it's nationally known, that we have things going on there that, that we didn't have some years ago, so, um, I make, I do make a motion, I mean a motion, to accept Vicky's resignation.
Make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
My second. Commissioner Garavaya? Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Meszczak?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
And on, uh, discussion and approval of appointing Joellen Bauer to the Civic Center Authority Board, um, um, she's a dedicated person that, that loves the Civic Center, and, and, again, um, I do suggest this, no, we reinstate her as...
I'll make that motion as well.
Okay.
Commissioner Garavaya?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Meszczak?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
And then, part D is, we're going to...
Well, what we need to do on that one, Mayor, that's two seconds, you'll, you'll notice that there's the appointment of the, the zoning administrator, code enforcement, uh, officer, and then there's discussion of the contract, so what you could actually do is do a motion for the appointment, if you have a recommendation, and then we can discuss the contract in executive session with the other contracts.
Okay, of course, the recommendation I had is David Garavaya, who's, um, who's had this job for the last, um, three years or so, and he's done excellent jobs, so, and actually, I would recommend, and, uh, then we will go into executive session and discuss this contract.
So, you'd make a motion to, uh, the appointment of the zoning administrator, code enforcement officer of David Garavaya, it looks like the, it says that's for an eighteen, approximately an eighteen-month contract, instead of your motion would be, or your request for a motion?
Yes.
I make that motion.
My second.
Commissioner Garavaya?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Meszczak?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
Okay, part D is, Miss Langs business? Uh, the old business? New business? Okay, uh, matters from the present audience, uh, as I stated at the start of the meeting, when you, you, uh, want to say, speak something to the council, uh, please, um, state your complete name. Yes, sir?
Tom Carter. Uh, a while back, I asked Commissioner Dennis Miller how much we had left to pay on our sewer plant, and he told me five and a half million. Last week, I FOIA'd the same information from Finance Department, and it's gone on here May first, two thousand nineteen, it's almost seven and a half million. Seems how that's two million dollars difference. I'd like to know which one's correct.
Sounds like a question for me, and...
It is.
Okay, okay. Okay, that was brought to my attention today, and I tell you, I have been here absolutely all day long, and I have not pulled that information, so I don't have response, an intelligent response for you tonight. I will look into that, and...
Would you like me to come up here tomorrow and talk to you?
I will actually be in the meeting tomorrow. How about Wednesday?
Okay. And I've only got one other request, and that's my problem, not yours probably, but, uh, I either need you to speak up a little bit, or I'm gonna have to move a little closer, 'cause you have a lower voice than the other people.
Okay, okay. I'll speak louder.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for telling me that.
Thank you, Tom.
Uh, I'm Ted Anderson, and, uh, with an organization called Hope Over Heroin. Uh, maybe some of you have seen some of the brochures that we passed out in various parades, and, uh, I tend to give information, and also with a request to go along with that. Uh, we started this venture back in October of two thousand and eighteen, and, uh, we were wanting to pray over Benton as, as a matter of just, uh, protection and for blessing on the, uh, on the, on the town. And so, we, we talked to Mayor Condon, because we felt like, because of due order, uh, that if we asked for the city official to give his okay, that our prayers would actually be more effective, and so that's the reason why that we did it in that fashion. Uh, he said, "Yeah, we'll write your proclamation." He said, "I'd be glad to do that." And so, uh, I just asked him, uh, you know, what's the number-one need that you have here in, uh, in Benton? He said, "By far, drugs." And he says that we really have a very difficult problem with this, and the national statistics, uh, also for here and, and in the nation as well, as far as drug recovery, is very, very small. And what we have found out, that is when you bring a coalition of people together, that you can address this in a more effective way. Just to give you one example, the drug court in Jefferson County, uh, they have a drug, uh, program to where they put together, it's a two-and-a-half-year program, and I asked what the success rate was, and it's ninety percent. And so, uh, we said, "Wow." Uh, you know, when you have like a, a low percentage, and then we found out that if you bring the faith-based plus the non-faith-based agencies, drug rehab agencies together, you have a more complete way of addressing this issue. And, uh, I happened to be in, in Long Island, New York, back in the seventies, and there was a man by the name of David Wilkerson, and David's Wilkerson was from Pennsylvania, and he went to the streets of New York City, and, uh, he, uh, addressed the drug problem there as well, and what happened is that he found out that if he addressed it in a manner to where that he would invite people to come to their drug rehab, rather than going into the streets and trying to bring them off, because, uh, found out that if they don't want help, then you're not gonna be able to do anything with them. So, whenever that they invited them to come when they were ready, their success rate went up to over eighty percent, whereas before, it had been down lo- lower than ten percent. And so, uh, what we had done, uh, is we were praying about, uh, you know, the thing that could be done, and, uh, I happened to be asked to go to minister of the church in Haran, Illinois, and, uh, I was gonna preach a message on hope for the new year. I thought it would be a very appropriate message, you know, for two thousand and nineteen. And I came across this article, it's called Hope Over Heroin. And I came back and told to Don Robinson, he and I have been working with this very close together, and, uh, Steve Horner is also involved in this as well, but, um, we shared it with the pastor of our church, and he was very excited about it, and so then we came to the mayor, and he said that, uh, he likes it, and so the thing that we love about this whole situation, it's not just an individual church. It is churches, it's businesses, it's drug rehab, uh, agencies, and, uh, you've got civil leaders that are involved in this as a whole. And what we have now, since we've been doing this, is that we have three different counties that are involved with this, and what we're wanting to do, and we have already set it up on August the sixteenth and the seventeenth of this year, we were gonna have Hope Over Heroin, uh, they, they're... Heroin, they're based in Cincinnati, Ohio area, and they're gonna come down with their team, and coupled with all of the teams that we have gathered together here, and we're going to have what is going to be like a street outreach to those who are on opioid addiction. How this got started in the first place is in Cincinnati in two hundred, two thousand and fourteen, they had twelve to fourteen, fourteen different overdoses on heroin in one weekend, and all of these individuals died. And so then what happened then is these churches there, they said, you gotta do something, and so they went in and they just developed this ministry called Hope Over Heroin, and they put it on Facebook, and they started having requests from different people throughout the United States, saying, would you come to our community as well? And so we contacted one of the guys of the article that I read from Conapolis, North Carolina, and they had great, great success, and what you do, it's a three-tiered program, and Donna, if you would, if you don't mind, passing this out to me. This'll just give you an idea of what it is, and the number one thing is, is that we believe that the gospel of Jesus Christ is the thing that changes and transforms lives, so that's the very first tier. The second tier is, is when we have this event, there will be what is called the City of Resources, the City of Resources will be these drug rehab agencies, faith-based, non-faith-based agencies, they will be on the premises. And so we've even got one group that's, is gonna be a bereavement group, if somebody has lost their, a loved one to that, they can go right there on the, at the venue and talk to them about the help that they can receive. We've got people like the Franklin County Substance Misuse Coalition, that they're involved in this as well, we've got three different Celebrate Recovery Agencies that are involved with this as well, from the Whittington Church, from the Redemption Church in Johnson City, and then there's been a new one that's been opened up in West Frankford, Illinois. And so we've got a number of these, Naranon, which is a place to where they will house individuals that are on the road to recovery. So we've got all of these individuals, Jim Muir, who's the city clerk, he is involved in helping us with our PR, and he and I are developing a plan right now to where that we can go to the radio stations and also the television stations, and he told me, he said, be prepared to get up early, early, Dad. I said, okay. So that we can put this on the airwaves as well, we're having a five K walk run on July the twentieth, we'll be starting at the Benton Civic Center, and this is already being placed on the Facebook, it's getting ready to be placed on radio and also television as well, and River to River is the one who is sponsoring this for us, they're taking care of all the metals, they're taking care of the snacks, they're taking care of the water, and t-shirts will be given, it'll be River to River on the front, on the back it will be Hope Over Heroin. And so what we're doing with this is that if we have two hundred people that actually register for this, it'd be twenty-five dollars a registration, we would have five thousand dollars to put into our budget for this Hope Over Heroin initiative that we're doing here. It's been amazing the kind of involvement that we're giving, I talked with one lady in particular, and she said, I've got children and they're with us, and she said, I've been thinking about going back to school to be a counselor to help some of these individuals, and when we made the presentation, she said, I'm going back to school, and I'm gonna, you know, become involved with this. So anyway, part of this, of what we're doing, is also gathering the churches together, and what they will do is if an individual goes through the drug rehab, then these churches will be there for those who want us, all voluntary, if they want to have someone to help them with an ongoing kind of help with their rehabilitation, not only will the drug rehab agencies be involved, but churches would be involved as well. And we're getting great, great involvement, and we're just very excited about it. One, my request tonight, and I don't know how far this goes, Brooke, is the one that actually suggested I do what I'm doing here tonight, and that is that part of this is on the sixteenth, which is the Thursday, Friday ninth, at five thirty, we're supposed to have a march that goes from downtown to go to the venue. Well, come to find out that you need eight months in advance in order to be able to do that because of the different permits. I don't know if there's anything that you guys can do, but I'm pleading, if there's anything at all that you can do, we would be much appreciative for that. We've already gotten the approval to walk on the sidewalks, and I always kept thinking about it, and I said, well, the sidewalks is better than nothing, but I said, if we can go down the main street with our big banner, and you see the Hope Over Heroin t-shirt, there's gonna be t-shirts of different types and colors and so forth, and we'll be marching, you know, towards the venue, and we start, started that night. There's gonna be a motorcycle event that's gonna take place, and what they're gonna do at that, at that time, is they're gonna have what they call, it's called a ride for life, but they burn out one of the tires in memory of those who've lost their lives to drug addiction. There's gonna be a huge LED screen, those that have lost their lives to drug addiction, we're asking for family members, I don't even know how many we've gotten already, several, we've gotten several already because Steve is involved with this, and this puts their picture, the date they were born, the day they passed away, the three words that describe the individual. And so then that will be going on this screen, and when we, this march is called the Memorial March, it comes from downtown to go to the venue, and when we get to the end, we release balloons in memory of everyone that's lost their lives to drug addiction. This also includes alcohol as well, because this is a big scourge as well. And so then the actual event takes place, the two-day event, and after that, whenever they're gone, that's when the real hard work goes on, because we realize that you're not gonna change the world in two days. And so what we wanted to do is to have this event, because here's the way I picture this, everybody talks about the drug addiction issue, and they know that we got a problem, we've got different initiatives, and we're very, very thankful, I've been privileged, Don and I have been very privileged, to be able to go in to talk to different individuals who are already involved with it, and they see the great need that is involved here. What we're seeing is that we've got to do more focusing on it. Anna Jarrett, I think is her name, she is the Director of Gateway, which is in Cartersdale. And when we had meetings, and we'd have over fifty individuals at one meeting, and over forty at another one, and she said, I cannot believe the kind of participation that you're having in the community to bring all of these individuals together like this. And so I look at it like this, I use this analogy, the sun shines down from the heavens, and sometimes you gotta take a magnifying glass to catch the rays of that sun, and to focus it where it really needs to be to start a fire. And I look at the sun, S U N, as S O N, and the magnifying glass is Hope Over Heroin. And what we're doing is that we're focusing it in on this area to see something really done for significance. Now, I'm an optimist, very often, I'm an optimist, and I would love to see Franklin County's drug program, I would really love to see that. I might, you might say, man, you should be a crazy. I said, all right, I certainly mean you, and so anyway, I'm pleading with you guys, if you can do anything, okay, if you can't, just say we're going to sidewalk.
Ted, we'll do, and you know what we can do, and thank you. Okay?
Okay.
We'll get back.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Washington, I think you said.
Oh, sorry.
Just to remind you, Wednesday, we have a bidletting here for the water project from the top of the street to Washington.
Very good. What time?
I think it's ten o'clock, I'm not sure.
Okay, I make a motion that we move into an executive session, so that we can have an opportunity to look over the, the contract that is before us.
Specifically, the discussion of possible appointment, upon the compensation, dismissal, performance, and dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal council of that public body, including hearing, testimony on complaint logs against an employee available to public body or against legal council of public body, permits, whatever it is. Need a second.
Mr. Garalaya? Yes. Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Majesna?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Well, you know, whatever.
You'll be in the morning.
All right, I'll give you calls sometime too.
I want to tell you.
Whatever you agree to, it's here, sir.
I don't know what's your...
I'm gonna go there, bro.
I know, I know.
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 I appreciate it for that.
I'm gonna, thank you.
Looking so forward to, still a lot of work, tell you, after the...
Well, I already know which one, I just wanted to bring it up, Dennis Miller told me that on the internet.
That's not the bio site, there'll be another one. The police is finalized, the trial, I think it's...
We do, we do finalize it.
Well, they have to do the payments or...
See, I know why, I can guess, probably nine-nine.
And I think he was in mind, so yeah, well, we're going to have two million of that money for the best, and so wait, I wouldn't hound him so much.
You know, I'm, that's where, now, we're, we're three city councils, right? So that's sort of, the three, most serious, serious, six, all over town.
There's churches and those, there was people calling up, when the fire went out, my basement was on fire, you're all right.
There was that smoke coming up through there, there was a leak, a tap going in, a sack air, it rained.
Then there was, then down there, then down there, he's...
The first night.
Here's your chance.
Down south.
Your chance.
Oh, yeah.
Nobody was playing.
Nobody was playing.
I'm waiting for you.
I don't want that.
Let's stop, sir, let's stop, I have to pay interest.
Well, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, they don't want, they have to throw in.
Surface waters, you're thinking of the same, yeah.
All part of my goal, years of trying to get in this.
Good change, they've got basement, mining on there, it's gonna blow, blow that water.
That's a big reason for the stop, and we blew it, I mean, we blew it all, people swore, it's all, this is stopping, and it'll come there and get that rifle ready.
We're never saying it's gonna...
We did that for the...
I remember saying, I remember saying, oh, you guys...
They're big, they're big, they're...
They get old.
They sit down, they're dragging on there.
So what's the deal?
Obviously, I have one.
Your respectful security is none of this.
Yeah.
Probably won't be here.
Why?
So I got, I don't want, um, our contract is...
So on this contract, you're trying to, why's it not paid right now?
She doesn't have a lot of money.
So they're gonna, I got one of all of that.
Twenty years.
We're negotiating, this is right.
I'm an Andrew.
I know.
I don't think we're...
You got me from that rough group.
Wait, I know where somebody is.
No.
That's not where he used to work.
This is my favorite, this is...
That's murder, that's murder, that's...
Okay.
That's what I mean.
I don't think he's...
I don't think he's...
So is your mom?
He's a big driver.
I remember, he's doing, working, I don't know, I don't know.
I don't got one, you guys, so, I just watched, but I never, that wasn't me, that never was anybody...
Kind of kind of.
Can you put, can you put, I mean a bulletin?
Oh.
She didn't have any, she didn't like lost pets.
Oh.
Three.
Oh.
A C P D I think it's where the.
Oh.
Here's the.
It worked with it.
No, no, no.
I'm like.
You're like.
I'm like.
Phew.
I'm like.
You're probably down the road.
He told me.
Mark is uh.
Yeah.
I knew it was gonna happen.
Well.
Well.
He's money the pretty.
Well, I think we'll get some, I think we'll get some more years out.
Well.
Well, he says all the birds. But um. But that's. So once they, how long are they? Don't want to know. How long about binding, we don't like to consider for that. It was pretty good. So I think once the law was in fact, as long as. I could be through us on my cars.
I'm not.
I'm not.
I'm not.
I'm not.
Right there.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I'm like, but it's gonna take years for us to report. I say if you do, you can.
Wait, you're going.
For somebody. So. And then what is that? I thought all three of them started going for a good mark. We just get.
I can't.
Yeah.
I can't.
Yeah.
I can't.
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 Yeah.
I have a.
She is.
Now she fits all this.
I think so.
And all that. I don't know if he's just kidding back with the dog.
I think all that.
He's.
He's.
Or maybe or his wife went on vacation and he's like.
I'm like crap.
You aren't recording all these conversations right?
Absolutely not.
Oh.
You are.
Sorry.
Yeah, I'm putting on the shoulders.
Yeah.
Huh?
Yeah, I'm putting on shoulders.
Oh, okay.
Well. I don't see your phone here.
You want to get a plug for taking care of?
Yes. And I had to pay that, I need to talk to. Down the way off to buy dog bucks and she wants more. And I need to.
Yes.
And it was crazy.
You probably talked.
One day and hopped her several times.
Well, I hope.
Yeah.
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 My bird.
No, he's.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Oh.
I don't know.
What?
Something Illinois.
He's.
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 Uh.
For numbers.
Do we talk?
Oh. What can help me with? What, what do you call them?
Or is.
Kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you gave him.
He had, he had, he has her.
I mean.
Right.
So I just.
Oh.
Yeah.
I said, I put her in my tunnel, I guess.
Yeah.
He was the one.
Yeah.
I got rid of that one.
Oh, you know where I got rid of that?
Like three years.
Yeah.
At it.
I got rid of my paperwork. That one's only.
Oh.
We're getting that. There you go. Yeah, I did.
No, not yours.
Oh, oh, okay.
So.
I won't forget.
Whatever.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
I mean.
I mean.
I think it, you know, what it probably was.
Yeah, it probably.
We have, we used to have a studio where we had a call like.
Probably.
You were a kid.
I was.
I was.
I was.
Last call you didn't even call.
Yeah.
The pain.
But.
My call.
Who was?
We managed.
Who was?
So now they.
Yeah.
I learned.
Yeah.
And here I am.
Yeah.
I, I.
I already made it. It was around. It's very. It's pretty still here.
Always wanted to.
Okay.
I can't.
He can't work.
He can't work.
He's.
He's working.
Rachel's.
Yeah.
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 I'm not sure about. I mean, hey, it's awful pretty quick too.
Fire department.
Oh.
And that.
I mean.
You know.
No.
Years.
Cause.
No.
No.
Yeah.
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 Hit the corner.
Yeah.
We're. We're. We're.
This year, thank you.
Yeah.
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 I don't know what year we must time we look at.
They did.
I don't know what time it is. It was like seven twenty. I thought it was. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That'd be going five.
Yeah.
I believe you walk right there. I don't know. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
I like to stay in car. Can't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then about time for my food digest.
Hi.
I'm not.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just.
You're not.
You wouldn't know.
Hey Kay, come here, miss.
You know.
She needs.
Didn't want to play basketball.
Maybe something.
Intention.
Hospital meeting tomorrow night, isn't it?
Yes. I got the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hospital meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So. Hospital meeting. That was my lowly business. Yeah.
And.
You're very. Yeah. Very good.
Yeah.
We're.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're.
Oh.
Called it.
Oh, were you there?
I thought you weren't there.
Yeah.
I can't.
Oh, that's right.
I mean.
I think.
Hey, I got a phone that took me saying.
Yeah.
I don't think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They were.
Yeah.
This is.
I.
Very.
I'm taking care of you.
I'm taking care of you.
Tammy.
I mean, I can name everybody, but.
Yeah. Kind of. Never.
I would say.
Happy for everybody.
Body better.
Go with.
Paul.
Yeah.
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 I have.
Yeah.
We.
My mother.
Send me.
I don't.
He's taking a picture of it so I can have.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I have.
Two hundred hours of the.
I just.
I know.
I just.
I was.
I was.
I was.
I was.
Did last year, but I thought.
You didn't just talk to Sam tomorrow.
You didn't.
Thing.
Make a.
Oh.
Yeah.
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 Next week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm.
I'm.
Copy.
You.
Yeah.
We got.
We're.
We're.
If it.
If it.
Right.
That'd be the thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty good.
How about you?
Yeah.
How about you?
Uh.
Okay.
Yeah.
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 Oh.
Yeah.
I don't.
Yeah.
Uh.
I did.
I did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wouldn't.
I'm.
Yeah.
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 Is.
I have my.
Yeah.
Well.
Well.
This is.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh.
Thank you.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
There's one.
Yeah.
Uh.
This is.
Start.
You know.
She really.
She really.
She really.
I need to be.
I really.
Yeah.
I really.
Yeah.
All right.
She, she wasn't really.
I just have.
Yeah.
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 She has.
Yeah.
She has.
Yeah.
She has.
She looks like in your face.
It's.
Yeah.
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 Right.
Oh, maybe she.
I thought.
She.
She didn't.
She.
Maybe.
She.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean.
Dog.
Yeah.
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 So.
Got him.
Yeah.
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 I think all.
In their own.
And they only.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
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 This was.
I.
Listen.
Yeah.
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 They.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have you been right?
Everybody's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
These.
Yeah.
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 This was high school.
This was.
High school.
Yeah.
Are you?
Yeah.
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 Oh.
I.
Yeah.
Always.
Yeah.
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 Raven from uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's your?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Raven from uh. Has got.
Because I knew she was.
Good.
She is a.
Well.
Ruth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
She is like.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She would knock.
Yeah.
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 I don't know.
Well.
Need.
This one.
Yeah.
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 You don't trust the kids.
Yeah.
You're more worried about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's.
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 Well.
Yeah.
I have to go inside of the building.
Cause I.
Yeah.
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 If I want to go home.
Yeah.
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 You behave.
The one is one going west.
I'm going home.
Is that west?
No.
I'm going.
Yeah.
This one down here or right by.
Other.
South main.
Right.
Yeah.
The other one toward. State.
West.
West main.
Yeah.
So around March from the square to West Main. The whole.
Yeah. Oh, is that the way they're going?
Yeah. I asked him out there.
Okay.
But I didn't.
Yeah.
I didn't understand it.
Well.
Sometimes.
I swear.
Well.
Everything.
Yeah.
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 I know.
Yeah.
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 Well, I can't get him that way.
Yeah.
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 Um.
By their house.
Yeah.
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 I know.
Boy, they.
Boy.
Right.
Yeah.
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 I'm like.
Well, definitely get a road over there.
Um.
Yeah.
I know.
I.
I'm.
I'm.
Yeah.
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 Hey. Are those little kids on their bikes driving past you guys? They write that, you know, they're little hellion. They mean they have their ass.
Are they?
From.
Well.
Yeah.
Are they?
They are from.
Yeah.
Yes.
They are from West City.
And.
They're disrespectful.
They cussing.
Yeah.
And.
And.
Yeah.
What happened to me?
A week ago.
I wish you got cussed out, probably.
No.
Oh, yeah.
They stopped. Right in front of.
They stopped right in front of my yard. Well, they act, they were apparently coming from the park, too. But there were some on my stomach walking. So they activated my earring here. And they were walking by, and I was like. Then they came around the front, they activated that camera. So I pulled up, and I'm just going up. They're just standing there talking. You could tell they were talking something. So I was watching them on the camera, and I'm recording the whole thing. Good. So I thought, no. Let them just hang.
Yeah.
And I'm going out there, letting know I'm watching her in.
Yeah, no, let the cat out of the bag, so to speak.
Yeah, so they were there, I think it was three and a half minutes. You know, according to my video. So, they were talking to me until they were just like. This one's here, take off. On the bike, comes through that front flower bed, and West Webster. And up into the yard. Boom, that's what I had. I go out the front door. I go, you get that bike. I didn't curse, nothing. I go, you get that bike down in my yard right now. I go, I'm sorry. I go, no, you're sorry you got caught. And I want to tell you all, I've got all of your. You see these signs here that say it's ADT? What do you think that means, or are you all in special aid? I did. And, anyway, I go, I've got all of your pictures.
You mean all the troublemakers is what it means?
And, uh, I go, I've been watching you and videotaping you since you've been in front of this house, staying in here. Plung.
Yeah.
I've got all of your pictures, and by the way, they're nice pictures.
I can hold them up to five by sevens if I want.
Yeah. And, uh, they were just, uh, uh. So most of the kids went to West City, well, there were three that were from going into Benton's there. And.
Was that Sunday, you said?
A week ago Sunday.
Okay, because the state police officer pulled a couple bikes over one day.
Did he?
Yeah, but I, I, they're just little hellion.
Hang there everywhere. And, uh, anyway, this one, he has got scared again. He goes, well, his name is Jesse something, I don't know. And I go, I, I go, why didn't you stop him? And he was like, I didn't know he was gonna do it. I go, well, that stranger got you on video laughing about it after he did it. Oh, they took off. They don't come near that property.
Good.
They don't come near.
I'd be afraid later.
But.
Hey, and our neighbor.
They know what's, they know little cameras, but I'm having.
Well, I don't know, they got evicted. They should be, somebody went over and said, they aren't here, they got evicted. So I don't know.
But see, West City for years, they've been blaming those West, West Webster apartments. There's no party anybody living there anymore, and no kids. That like section there is all empty.
Oh, is that the, it looks like they're making it really nice.
John, John Owen.
Yeah.
And he is.
Well, no, it is, he's gonna put some money in it, maybe.
Oh, yeah, he had a lot of money in it now.
Has he?
Already.
But you know what, we've got little girls running that aren't this big, that scares me dead. Early morning, they're way over, you know, on the other side of our house. And then they're, they stand straight and look at you, and then. Or they'll ride their bike and stop them in the middle of the street like. Dude.
They don't.
Or they'll be blaming their school.
They don't even show them when they cross on the street.
I'm afraid they might occasionally come around that corner because they're right there.
But now, my problems are coming from the opposite, coming from that trailer court. And there's a boy, I've heard, um, pretty good authority, that they're here from Philadelphia. They're, and then there's somebody locked up in prison. More than likely around here, that's why they moved here.
Obviously.
You know, they're at muddy, pinky, they'll make even Marion, you know. And, uh, he rode by, one, a substitute teacher. He rode by and just cussed him out. He got in the child, just cussed him out. He was suspended for the last two weeks of the school. As you can only suspend kids for two weeks, horrible idea for a school year.
How about me?
And they suspended him for the last two weeks.
But the police come to the apartments by us, they know everybody's name, the parents, the kids. But there's nothing they can do, and the kids say, you can't, you can't do anything with me, you know.
You know, long.
They're not supposed to be up there.
I can do something.
Two and a half, or something, whatever. Oh, well, okay, they come to our apartment, because who was telling me, because a friend of, and she said, there's nothing we can do because they're not defected. You know, they, they're, they're.
Some of these kids, they're so angry, though.
I know.
And how did they become what they did? They just see a yard that's kept up, and they're pulling a bunch that goes down to the parking area stuff.
Right.
Look at all the benches, they had it tore up down there. But you know, so what's happening in those homes?
In this apartment, the mother's laying on the couch drinking, and.
They're not being watched.
Because we know her, uh. Brother-in-law, brother-in-law, and it's not a team that's a kid.
I got the same one down here. You know, it just, this is going out on Halloween TV in somebody's house today. This isn't like that, you know, some other kid's house. This isn't that. This is just a drug, yes. But I haven't had any drugs yet.
Well, that's why we're. And like, well, they, they don't want to embarrass them because it's too many. We know, we don't.
But you know, I got, I know someone.
Yeah, I know, sorry.
Okay, she puts on such a mask. With her child, it's a special needs child. And when the weather's nice, and those windows are open, she makes it all tough. It is horrible to think she's. And. She's down the door one day.
Like, one day?
Because one day she's, she's, she's. So we wanted to go.
Everything okay?
But, you know, if I was.
I changed it on her sweater.
She's a. And she takes you out. And you know what she does for a living?
She works for the children.
Yeah.
Did you see a lady come around? I know what it is.
And she's like, five minutes.
I don't think they were doing it. But they were going slow, and they came down by my fence, it was up there. They went to the woods, right there. I don't know if the little boy had a bag when they went, but when they came back, he was carrying his bag. And then he went back around the other way. Just.
How's your parents?
Great.
They in Florida?
Uh, in Georgia, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, Alabama.
Long to have some good reports.
Good.
Anyway.
Every pin. So he does.
Keep an every pin. But now, it's.
I said, now you know, it's a two-seater.
Well, you boys went to Georgia.
So that's your, that's your.
So now she's thinking.
Yeah. But you gotta trade the bed and the kids.
Oh, no, we don't.
You're gonna trade the bed, okay. All right, I appreciate that. But you're saying, do what? Oh, you're in the bed? Okay, yeah.
Come here.
That's your senior, didn't seem to bother her.
Well, I've got such a burden, I cannot wait till it's.
I think the firefighter, I don't know that.
So the firefighter dropped it.
Got in there and they stole both my.
How old are you?
Uh, it's not a Mazda, it's a.
A spider? It's, it's a, definitely a spider.
The leader, she's her dog, she's out there.
A Mazda, none of them.
Yeah, that's.
Mazda Miata, yeah.
No, that's just. It's just Rachel.
Relax, man. I, I can almost mention once you're.
Now, Abby, you're hitting her what, right? On her own? Or she started, no, Frank. From I did, they had to pass her everything. When they're back and forth, kind of, they wasn't.
No, it ain't, no, it is.
These aren't like, both races, these are racing for two hours, well, she's.
Yeah.
And then hopefully.
That's not a pronto, is it?
She went and got her remeasured.
Plymouth, uh, Plymouth pronto spider.
She actually grown too much.
Looked like that.
Really? In six months. Yeah. Yeah, the legs have grown too much. So we were able to get her a little bit bigger of a wheelchair, and, um, it gave us more options. So that was cool, that was the good thing about it.
Can-am spider?
Yeah.
Was it in her leg?
Yeah.
It was like, you were.
No, Abby, because then we wouldn't need a wheelchair.
We could take money.
But she's, yeah, she's good, she's her.
Fiat.
Right.
Little Fiat fighter, yeah. I don't know why they think of that. Hey, they're pretty good, little bitch. Reviews.
She's thinking.
Because of the vacation.
That'll get her off my.
There you go. I haven't finished the deal.
Yeah, I mean, you need to get right in, you're probably big in that thing.
It's high school, only six feet.
Basically, probably nine.
And I was six one, but I think I've shrunk up.
Yeah, yeah, you're a little older, it's, uh, start losing some of that. If you're wearing sandals and then you're. Gold.
I know, I told them.
That doesn't mean anybody.
Yay!
He only frowns in his sleep.
Well, you got my best neighbor down job.
We're gonna look at that.
Well, you will be if you're on this thing.
No. You can't afford my overtime.
Oh, my God. Oh, my God. Thank you, Michelle.
Comfortably, you can thank her, because you're not, we're not picking off her long.
We don't get far, I have a camera, I think. The commissioner, the commissioner, the man of white on him.
This is a big, very, so I'm gonna have her on your duty real quick.
Hold on, I'll get my feather, that's your shirt.
That's for you, friend.
Buzzing all night. Taking notes. Need a motion to go back into regular session?
Please make a motion to go back into regular session.
Second.
Mr. Garalaya?
Yeah.
Mr. Story? Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Messersmith?
Yes. Before we let the minute show that Commissioner Don Story has, uh, came back in following, uh, leaving during six. Six E, he's, he's now back in regular session. So we're, everybody's in attendance. Um, we went into executive session, uh, to discuss fourteen C. Uh, we have three contracts concerning individuals that have been recommended for positions. Uh, the first one is the employment agreement for a community relations director to begin on the third day of July. Two thousand nineteen for a four-year period, that's Rachel Gardner, uh, community relations director. We need a motion and a second to accept the employment agreement for community relations director for Rachel Gardner.
I make that motion.
One second.
I will always vote my convictions, and I will always vote, uh, on this ma, these matters, these contracts, or anything I vote on. I want the public to always know that I will always vote in what I believe to be the best interest of the city. And to honor all of the citizens who put me in this position. I'm not a player, as suggested. Uh, I'm not a player, okay? I'm an honest person, and I, uh, hold myself to high integrity. And I will vote, always vote my, my conviction.
Yes, Chief. Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Messersmith?
Yes.
Mayor Congress?
We have an employment agreement for zoning and code enforcement officer, economic development administrator for approximately eighteen months through January four of two thousand twenty-one. Commencing June twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen for David Garalaya. Need a motion and a second for the employment agreement just discussed.
Make a motion.
Mr. Garalaya? Mr. Story?
Yes. Yes. We have, uh, a fire chief employment agreement, um, that previously, uh, recommended that position, uh, with Shane Cochrane. Uh, that would be for a one-year employment agreement, and that would be commencing retroactive to June ninth, two thousand nineteen, for twelve months. We need a motion and a second to accept the employment agreement for fire chief for Shane Cochrane.
Make the motion to accept his, uh, contract.
Mr. Garalaya?
Yeah.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Messersmith?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
I make the motion. Yes.
Mr. Garalaya? Yeah.